Can you join us with video?
Andy, the one thing I'll say is I do not have the written memorandum for the first item on the agenda.
Drawn, so we won't be dealing with that.
Oh, Bird Evanov, yeah, okay. Cool, makes my life easier.
Okay, let's see who we have. We have Andy, we have Lee, we have Marilyn Altman, we have Danielle and we have Tom Farkas. Tom, can you turn on your video?
Yeah, I don't know why it's not on. Let's go. Here we go, let's see.
Might need permission to do it or something.
Well, I don't know.
Well, now we got a yellow bar. Although that went away. Anyway, if you figure out how, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm with you in spirit here.
All right, that's good. Let me just mention that we were seeking additional people to join us on the ZVA and we're still doing so. We have filled the board slots. There's also alternate slots. We have one of those filled. And our general procedure is to have alternate serve for a while and then become regular members. It's sort of like a training ground. So any new people coming in, come in as alternates. Tom's been on a while, so he'd be next up to replace anybody that may leave the board. And I also am trying to balance us so that we have people from all over town and we have a representative group, male, female, and I would like to see at least one minority member join us. And so that's it for the board structure. Then we have with us tonight, Lee Levy, back from the hospital, Marilyn Altman, back from her surgery. Daniel Dancheck, I think you're, are you well?
I'm, I'm good.
You're good, all right. And Tom, you're good?
I'm, I'm good, but I'm in the, I'm in the dark.
Okay, did I miss anybody? We're all set. So let's start. Let me give the speech. We have a link that's really important. So it seems kind of superfluous to tell you about the link after the fact, but if you need to pass it on to anybody, here it is, it's norwalk.org, www.norwalk.org, nineteen thirteen forward slash nineteen thirteen forward slash meeting dash notice. And if you go to that link, it'll lead you to other information that's out there. Members of the public can call in and listen to a meeting. They will not be able to speak or see any of the meeting participants. That's what you call it. Each meeting will use a unique meeting webinar ID. Please find the information using the link I just gave you. Members of the public who wish to provide will need to register in advance and use the Zoom meeting platform. All participants will be muted on entering the meeting and to speak, click the raise your hand indicator and you will be called on by the host of the meeting who at the moment is and in public comment section, please find the information using the link. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting but are not participating can view a live stream on the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. This stream is delayed by approximately 20 seconds. Please find the information using the link. The meeting recording and minutes will be posted on the City of Norwalk website within seven days after the meeting. Member of the public who wish to provide comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance meeting for those comments to be read into the record. They should be submitted at least four hours in advance of the meeting to t maldonado@norwalkctw. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order at this time. I think I've already introduced everybody, so we don't need to repeat the roll call. This will begin with item B because item A has been withdrawn from the agenda which was twenty two oh six one six dash oh four and item B is continued from the eighteen, eighteen August two thousand twenty two. You ready to go, Lee?
Yes, we're looking at item two two dash zero eight one eight dash zero one, John and K Garrett, variance for number of stories, repropose two and a half stories maximum allowed, variance for rear setback, eight point five feet existing, proposed fifteen feet required and side setback seventeen point two feet existing and proposed thirty five feet from center line required. Section one one eight dash three four zero C. And, excuse me. One one eight dash nine hundred B and variance to allow parking within the front yard setback. Section one one eight dash one two two zero J for an existing single family dwelling in B residence zone. Property located at seventeen Beach Drive, District Six, Block Thirty Six, Lot Thirty Five. Request, the applicant seeks variance of story maximum to accommodate a house raised to make the structure flood compliant. Setback variances are sought in the event that portions of the existing non-conforming footprint of the structure must be rebuilt due to structural issues. Additionally, the applicant also requests variance to remain existing parking configuration. Background, the home is a single family residence originally constructed in nineteen oh five. It is not currently compliant with FEMA flood hazard zone regulations. Analysis and findings. The purpose of the FEMA flood hazard zone regulations are to ensure that all structures in a flood zone are adequately constructed to withstand coastal flooding event. The proposed height of the structure is compliant with the maximum allowed in the past. The board has looked favorably on these requests for relief from both height and number of stories. Require stories requirements for structures that will be built in flood compliant. The lot configuration and parking conditions in the area could be considered a hardship to allow the parking configuration to remain as is. Mr. President?
So actually, there's a revise, so I'll just add the revision which appeared at the bottom. Maybe you didn't get the revised.
The proposed plans have been revised so that a story variance is no longer required. The existing non-conforming footprint will remain. The applicant seeks variance for only continuation of the parking in the front setback.
The applicant want to comment?
Hi, yes, Amy Savitakis, Rucci Law Group on behalf of the Garretts, who are the owners of seventeen East Beach Drive. As this is a continuation and as you recall, we spent much of our conversation last time reviewing the story variance and we were able to modify the plan such that we will now be going from an existing three-story house to a two and a half story house. So as stated, we have withdrawn the variance requests having to do with the structure itself. So the only remaining request is for variance of one eighteen, one two two zero J to allow the continuation of the existing non-conforming parking space. As I stated at the last meeting, this is a space that's been in existence for as long as, as anyone can remember. It is a convenient spot to get cars off of the road in that, that area of Rowayton, Bell Island, as you all know, very tight for parking and very tight on street. That spot's used both by the homeowners and then also even by some other friends and neighbors since it's adjacent to the, the park there. So we would like to be able to continue that, that parking space.
Amy, do you want to bring the survey on the screen?
Sure.
As you face the building, it's the immediate left of the garage, right?
Well, uh, there's, so, so actually, it's interesting that you say that because there is right next to the garage, an area that my, my client really didn't consider a parking space. That's more of a turnaround area as you're coming out of the garage over here that sort of paved. The, the spot that we consider the non-conforming spot that we're discussing is this spot right here, which is surrounded by retaining walls. But yes, if you were to consider this paved area near the garage a spot, then yes, that would, that would be one area. And then this is clearly just a, a parking spot here near Foster Place.
Consider both areas tonight. I just tell you, in my brief view of the property, and you know, there's a legal front, which is the front that you're talking about where you want the variance. And then there's the practical front, I'll call it, which is on Parkview Road and it has that little bit of space to the left of the garage entrances.
Correct.
And obviously, in that particular area, it's extremely congested. And so I obviously favor having that parking continue. It's already there. We don't, doesn't need to be added.
Yes, we're not adding any new parking. That's a good point. This is both areas here on East Beach and the area in, you know, adjacent to the garage off of Parkview are existing areas. There, we don't, there's no intention to make any changes to those areas and it does, as you, as you point out, keep cars off of the road in an area that is very difficult to get around, particularly when cars are parked on the road. To the extent there's, you even can get a car parked on the streets in that area.
Yeah, but I just added my two cents and then we've got five members, so we got four members to hear from them.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Anybody else have a question or comment at this point?
Well, you know, we've, we've looked at at least a couple of months ago, very similar problem on Bell Island. And you know, we approved very similar parking configurations. So I, I don't see any issues with it. You know, certainly parking down there is at a minimum. And you know, if a homeowner is willing to lose some green space in order to park a car for themselves or a visitor, I don't have an issue with it.
All right. Marilyn, I know you've seen the property.
Oh, yeah, I walk by it almost every day. So, and I took another look today and actually I, I agree with what, you know, Lee is saying. It's just a very sensible thing to do that the island is, has become crowded, especially since it's public, so.
Particularly since it exists as is right now.
Yeah, but I think everything has, I think everything around here has really, you know, grown in population a bit.
Danielle?
Yeah, I have no objection to the parking spaces.
And Tom?
Yeah, I mean, it's just puzzle pieces and if they can fit those puzzle pieces in there to, to help themselves to a, a better situation, then I, I, I think it's fine.
Yeah, well, it's good for them and good for that immediate community, not having to squeeze by another car. With that in mind, does anybody, I presume you don't need to go any further in asking for the variance since, you know, the board favors it already. Is there anybody who wants to speak against this who's at the meeting tonight?
So if there are any call-ins, you need to press star nine on your phone to raise your hand.
Wait a few seconds and let's see if there's anybody. All right, I presume nobody raised a hand.
No.
Okay. You can take down your display. I think that there's no need for rebuttal because there's nothing to rebut and, and we'll move ahead. So we'll deal with the, the vote later when we go through each of the items.
Thank you.
Thank you. My agenda, we have item C. Gregory and Megan Stewart. Go ahead, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. Item number two two dash zero nine one five dash zero one, Gregory and Megan Stewart. Variance aside yard setback, proposed sixteen point five, required twenty two for proposed garage addition at the Westerly side and existing proposed fifteen point four required twenty two for existing in-ground pool at Easterly side, section one one eight dash three one zero C and variance of front yard setback for existing pool pump, less than seventy feet required. Section one one eight dash nine one zero at existing single family residence in triple A's residence zone. Property located at fifteen Sky Top Drive, District Three, Block Twenty Three, Lot Twenty Seven. Request, the applicant seek setback variances for proposed one-car garage, existing in-ground pool and spa and spa equipment. Background, the single-family home was built in nineteen sixty four. The property contains illegally non-conforming shed and generator. Both zoning and building permits were issued in November of twenty twenty for location compliant in ground pool spa and associated equipment. When survey was submitted for the variance application, the proposed garage construction, it was noted that the pool spa and equipment were not installed as proposed and did not meet setback requirements. There is no COZC or CO for the in-ground pool spa. While there is no zoning hardship identified, it could be considered a practical difficulty to reinstall the in-ground pool spa. Since this is an in-ground pool, the visual effect of the side setback encroachment is somewhat diminished. If the board grants the side yard setback variance to allow the pool to remain as is condition that the spa equipment installed in the front setback located approximately sixty one feet from the front property line, seventy feet required be located for compliance seems reasonable. The proposed one-car garage would encroach with approximately one hundred feet of footprint in the Westerly side yard setback. An alternative, an alternative is a detached garage which could be proposed in a compliant location further from the street. Mr. Chairman?
Who's speaking for the applicant?
There's three of us tonight, Gregory Stewart, the owner, my spouse, Megan Stewart, as well as our architect, Giancarlo Massaro.
Okay, well, who's leading the pack?
I will start, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Great, I'm gonna start with the, the pool and the ask for the pool, which was we gave the contractor signature pools a survey from two thousand and sixteen that has specified setback for side and backyard that was used to spec out the pool. That was used, sent to the city for approval and then obviously developed, we had some existing placement changes when it came to where we were going to build the pool, shifted slightly a foot or two. And since we've then looked at building out the garage, we had a new survey created that then showed the issues that the pool has with those existing conditions and the setback that has since been revised from a two thousand and sixteen survey to a two thousand and twenty two survey. So we used a, an approved survey that was dated, previously approved by the city and now facing both the issue with the setback of the in-ground pool as well as the spa equipment with a contractor that we need to resolve.
You mentioned that it's a couple of feet that had changed. Can you be more specific?
I don't have exact measurements, but we know that it was about seven feet that it changed from original plan to, to current. Which put it at about seven feet over, I think is where it is. And Giancarlo, you can back me up here, but I think it's about seven feet over the setback now.
Yeah. Okay. And it's installed, obviously.
It is, yes.
And then the garage?
The garage, I'll, I'll start there. Thank you for hearing us out on this. I wanted to just quickly share just our experience with the ongoing issues that we've had with our, with our garage and are also our mudroom flooding. It has been, when we bought the house, the house had been vacant for a while. It did have mold and we didn't know why. There wasn't any explanation for it. Unfortunately, I think we've learned why that issue is the case with our driveway pitching toward our house. It has been, we have confirmed, or at least we have from all of our records, at least nine times, but it's probably closer to twelve. Where whenever we experience a significant amount of rain, especially in a short period of time, the way our driveway pitches, it, we, we experienced significant flooding. When we were in the middle of construction in our house in twenty fourteen, we had a, an additional trench drain added for the, for the actually right in front of our garage door. Then when, again, like our first recorded, our first record of when we had flooded was in twenty seventeen. And that was then when we had brought on a contractor to install drainage tanks. That it was a significant expense over fourteen thousand dollars to have drainage tanks added so that any water that the existing drains at our, at our garage and by our mudroom door could divert the water to it. We actually flooded pretty significantly, like maybe a month after it had been installed and I had even called the contractor and said this is a problem and they had said, well, when it rains really hard, this just might happen. We have then, since then, since when we encountered additional flooding, I had also called the city. When we could watch the rain, we were, we were getting rain that was in the street and it would, because the lip to our driveway was quite low. We were taking water on from the street as well, again, like significant rain. And so the city came and they added a, a bit of a lip to the end of our driveway. It was a temporary fix. It didn't address it. We continued to experience significant flooding. Then we, just this past year, we then spent forty five hundred dollars to have a very significant lip added to our, to the end of our driveway and we flooded again. I don't know, a week or two after that had happened. So the, it is, it has become an ever-present problem in our lives. We have a rain alert set for our phones anytime we receive rain and then I am tracking to see how intense is this rain going to be? How much are we getting? We have left work early to come home to be prepared to manage the rain. When it does rain and when we do flood, it means usually hours of us spending literally shop backing water out of our garage to try to prevent it from coming into the house. It is basically a nightmare. And really, when we had the flooding in, in just this past year and and we felt like we had done everything we could possibly do that wasn't extreme from a construction standpoint to address the flooding, that was when we knew we needed to talk to our architect about figuring out, we have to essentially repitch our driveway and that would mean, and I'll let Giancarlo explain the intricacies of what our proposed construction plan was, but we knew that we were literally faced with no other option of having to repitch our driveway. Because if we don't, we will just continue to flood. Our neighbor's yard is also higher than ours. So we receive rain coming from their yard into our driveway. It is, it's a nightmare really in, in its simplest form. So I'm gonna let Giancarlo then take it from here to explain what we're proposing and why, given all of our extenuating circumstances.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Hi, I'm Giancarlo, the architect, assisting the stewards. I'm gonna try to share my screen.
I'm looking at your plot plan right now.
Oh, you were able to see it?
Well, it was a document that's on our site and then I pulled it up.
Okay, I'd like to be able to let me just do a screen share. Can you see my screen?
I can, same document I have.
Yeah, so.
Almost the same. There's some blue stuff added to the one I have.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll go to that. And this is the existing condition. So I just want to sort of point out what Megan was referring to. You can see here, all the yellow highlights are showing how the grade is much higher along their neighboring property and everything is pitching toward the house. So there's an entryway here, which is the typical entry the owners use. And there's a single-car garage on this side of the, of the home. That's all at an elevation of ninety nine point one. So you can see fairly simple, all the grade is rising up around the backyard and this up along the driveway. So this is, this is where what Megan was mentioning is it's flooding, all the water's pitching toward the house, regardless of all the drains, trench drain that runs the full length. It's still an ongoing issue. The, the proposed garage that you might be looking at. So the thinking, this is the, the probably the site, the survey that you're referring to. We're actually gonna use my, my diagram might be easier to understand. The approach here is that we want to attach the garage with a breezeway. And the thinking is that this side entry is the typical entry the owners use on a daily basis. So by creating this attachment of a breezeway, we're essentially able to isolate that entry without altering the structure of the home on this side. That allows us to have a landing and a few steps up into an elevated garage. The plan is to elevate the garage slightly enough so that all these grades will then pitch away from the garage and away from the home. And this could be regraded, you know, appropriately with new drainage system that's gonna be designed. And so by attaching it at this location rather in the back of the home is a whole, you know, it's a whole different design study that is not feasible. You know, that would increase an enormous amount of paving and impervious surface, which I think is going to, you know, probably increase the problem. So here you'll see, we're proposing the garage at sixteen point five is the setback and the existing is twenty two, which is here. So, and that, and that's a result of putting the breezeway here to isolate the entry, to close the single-car garage and allow the owners to have access directly into the home of the side entry. And at the same time, being able to use the garage and not have this area with all the grading flooding into this area. So that's one of the hardships. The other point I want to make, which wasn't noted, I want to have it on record as well is the survey of the home. Per the regulations, the minimum is a one acre, forty three thousand five sixty square foot minimum lot area. And the owners are dealing with an existing less than half an acre property. So the, all these setbacks and all the requirements they're trying to meet. You know, we're dealing with a half, less than a half acre property to try to meet these regulations, which typically which typically they're based on the lot area of a whole acre. So I think that is the hardship that has created the problem. You know, with the pool, the spa and trying to just improve their property with a simple garage addition. Um, it's, you know, non-conforming law. So we really appreciate if that would be taken into consideration for the record. Um, you know, how we try to solve these problems, but you know, having a half acre property is is really, I think, the bigger issue of the hardship. Um, that's, you know, been been causing all these variance requests. Is there anything else you want to add, Megan or Greg?
No, that was really helpful. Thank you, Giancarlo.
I'd like to ask, have you had the site studied by a civil engineer for drainage?
We we have not. Uh, we had, uh, when we had our tanks done, um, again, back in 2017 is when we had uh a drainage consideration that we thought would be the solve to what this is. And there's two storage tanks put in the back as well as a storage tank in the front that were all connected to our leaders um of our house to try to get any runoff that we could manage um to not drain to the driveway, but to drain exterior um to uh sunken tanks in the yard.
Yeah, so essentially dry wells.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But the capacity of those dry wells was never established by taking a maximum rainfall calculation and sizing the tanks to hold it.
I, well.
Sure they were.
Yeah, I'm sure they were too, actually.
I I the problem is, is that when we take on, when it rains so quickly in such a short amount of time and because of of our pitch, like we won't, we don't flood every day. We flood when we have extreme rain, which.
Oh, that I understand.
More, yeah.
But the point is that a civil engineer would have been able to make that calculation to size the tanks, how deep they have to go, and the pitch of the pipe. That's required. I have a feeling because I've experienced this on projects that your tanks are set too high and the pitch of the pipe is insufficient to carry the rainwater that has fallen on the hard surface. So I think there's some deficiencies there. My opinion.
Thank you, Lee.
Uh, do the board members have questions or comments before we get into it any deeper?
Um, actually, uh, may I ask, oh, one of my comrades here, Lee, what are you saying is that had those, had that been done and had those uh that been what, you know, what you suggested, that could have handled the water? Is that what you're saying?
Um, yes, I've had experience with that, especially on a project in New Jersey. We ended up having to put I think it was nine dry wells of uh 1,200 gallons each. And they had to be set eight feet below grade to be able to capture the uh intensity of the rain. And there is uh a calculation that can be done on local rainfall for intensity. Um, I've used that calculation for many things, including the sizing of gutters. So that is all available. So I think your problem started when these tanks were installed insufficiently.
I mean, I will say we we were experiencing the issue before the tanks were installed.
Oh, I have no doubt about it. I mean, yes, it existed before the tanks were installed. And the tanks didn't solve it because they weren't, I would say, weren't done properly.
And may, may I ask, when, uh, just refresh my memory, when would they install?
As June 2017 by um Andronico.
Of this year?
No, June of 2017.
I'm sorry, okay.
But Megan, you have that documentation available potentially to share if needed. I would think, because I I don't think we can just make assumptions that they didn't do any calculations, right? They must have, you know, they must have done some calculations to make a determination on what size and where and pitch. I mean, it's too much work, I think. Um, uh, that would be my point of view to to assume that something was necessarily incorrect.
Yeah, we can take a look for it.
And may I just ask, just again, you contacted them, correct, after you flooded within, you know, very short time? And and they said what?
Um, I spoke to, uh, they said, well, you know, what we just experienced was an extraordinary rain. And um, so that can happen.
And did they come out again, or did you request that?
Oh, I, oh, um, yeah, we.
Well, did they calculate for a hundred year storm or a 500 year storm?
Well, I don't know.
That's what the calculations are based on.
Yeah.
So you can't tell me that.
I mean, it was, I, it was however many years ago, I would have to certainly look to see what documents we have. And um if it could be as simple a fix as that, I would. That would be great, but.
Are they still in business? Are they still around?
They are.
They what?
Yes, they are. We have, yes, they are.
I would think they have.
I can share my screen with the all the details of what they did, um, if that's helpful for the team.
Yes.
Giancarlo, will you mind um stopping your share?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Can um everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So June 12th, 2017, this was uh the specifications.
Doesn't really say anything other than the materials they used.
Is there any information other than this on that?
Not that I found it a very cursory look, so I would have to do it, do a deeper dive into anything previously from a why this was recommended. Um, but this was obviously the recommendation that we move forward with.
Okay, I think we're going to need to see some some drainage and some information. Um, you know, I mean, you may have gotten taken on this. I don't know, but if it's not working. Uh, I truly believe you needed a civil engineer to make the calculations based on a hundred year, 200 year storm. And the frequencies of the storms, yes, are getting heavier. Hundred year storms are like, uh, you know, during the rainy season, almost a monthly occurrence. So I understand your problem with that. Um, you know, I I don't know, you know, how you know, once that's looked at, um, you know, we can better understand uh your work on the garage. Um, you know, to uh to raise it and, you know, give you a variance for a side yard setback. In terms of the equipment that's located in the side yard, I think you need to move it. It's my opinion. Uh, put a fence, put it behind the fence, screen it, uh, but it's got to be moved out of the setback. I, my opinion is I would not require you to move the pool and spa. Probably, you know, just that was a an error of judgment at the time.
You haven't had a um an immediate neighbor complain about us, have you?
No, our our nearest neighbor who faces the pool has had no issues and sent a letter to Tammy saying so.
Okay, that the letter I saw today, I guess so. Um, and I agree about the equipment. I I understand the garage and I understand why the garage is where it is. And the drainage issue, it would be helpful if we could understand it a little better. It's good for you and good for us both. Um, and then maybe then we understand why the garage needs to be where it is as opposed to closer to the house. Um, so it might be a good idea if we just hold you over till the next meeting. And in the meantime, if you could come up with some more information about the drainage.
I would say that's absolutely necessary.
I I agree with Lee. It might also just be good to get a second opinion.
You mean civil engineer?
From a civil engineer, yeah, maybe not the company that did the installation.
I'm sure they don't have an engineer on staff.
Online. Well.
Anyway, um, that's what I'm inclined to do is hold it over. Uh, can you handle that, Mr. Stewart and Ms. Stewart?
Yeah. Okay, we'll do our due diligence and uh and bring it back to you. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if you can afford getting a civil engineer, it's not my business. But if you can, uh, that'd be great.
It's 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 the emotional need that we have to have. So we're going to find, figure out a way to do it because we can't live this way. That's what it boils down to. So you've seen pictures.
I just don't want you to think of it as like a fine or something. So we're not forcing this on you in that manner. We're just strongly suggesting.
Yeah, we'll get multiple opinions and we'll figure out from the next step what it has to be.
Um, thank you. That would be good. So let's uh, let's bring this to a conclusion unless you have something additional you want to add. Uh, and then take it up again next month. Is that okay with folks?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
But that's done. We'll we'll hold over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me look at the agenda. So we have um item B Zion Property, which is the Subaru Subaru signs.
Okay. The next item is 22 dash 0915 dash 02 Zion Properties LLC. Variance of letter height for proposed Subaru wall sign. Proposed 36 inch letter height, maximum 24 inch letter height. Allowed section 118 dash 1294A2 at auto dealership in Business Two Zone. Property located at 520, AKA 512 Main Avenue, District 5, Block 22C, Lot 41. Request, the applicant seeks variance to increase the letter height to three feet for a proposed Subaru sign. Background, the newly constructed car dealership is on 4.7 acre site. The building is greater than 45,000 square feet. Previous sign variances were granted in 2020 to allow the Subaru sign for a total of three wall signs where two wall signs are allowed. At that time, a letter height variance was not brought, it was not sought for the Subaru sign as it was proposed at a compliant 24 inches height. In addition, another variance was granted for the directional sign allowance of both height and maximum area for a service wall sign. Analysis and findings, the approval of additional letter height for this Subaru wall sign would be reasonable based on the scale of the building.
It's it's Tom. Or is a lettering that's affixed to the building, the lettering you desire? Or does that is going to be larger than that?
Um, my name is Rick Costantini. I'm the attorney for the applicant Zion Properties. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, I I've gone past the building and I just want to know if the signage now is what you want or you desire larger?
No, we have not. Um, the the I'll share my screen in just a second. But the the signage we're asking for is not on the building currently. We did not um put anything up that was not in compliance. Um, again, my name is Rick Costantini, um, the attorney for the applicant Zion Properties. You know them as Garaville Subaru. Uh, we were before you a couple of years ago, actually, when they were under contract to purchase, uh, what was then the Ethan Allen property and then he bring property. Uh, and we came and asked for a couple of variances for signage based on the size of the building uh that was being proposed. And we received those variances. At that time, we did not request um a variance for letter height. Uh, we had no intention of going large. And then what was permitted, which is the 24 inches for both the Garaville wordmark and the Subaru wordmark. Um, the, I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'm gonna share my screen because it might make it easier to discuss this if I can do that.
Cool.
Okay. So this is the front of the building that faces uh Main Avenue. And the, one second.
This is what, this is what you're requesting, correct?
This is what we're requesting, correct? So the initially, when we came before the board, um, a couple of years ago, we had asked for uh 24 inch letters for the Garaville signage here and 24 inch letters for the Subaru wordmark here. Um, at the time, we received approval from Subaru corporate to do that. And we submitted that letter along with our uh application. In the two years since the building has been constructed, I'm not sure how many of you have driven past it, but it is up on Main Avenue. Um, we are at the, my client is at the point now where they are preparing to install the signage. And in talking with Subaru corporate, Subaru corporate notified my client that the Subaru wordmark of 24 inches in letter height does not meet their corporate branding uh and marketing standards. That the Subaru wordmark based on the size of the building and needs to be 36 inches uh per letter in height. Um, obviously, that's why we're before you today is because in order for my client to get corporate approval to have the signage on the building, um, which is why the 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 Garaville wordmark is not up yet. We haven't put that up and we have not put the Subaru, I believe. Currently, the only thing up is the um Subaru star cluster. And on the side of the building, um, you can see it here if I can slide over. The Subaru on the side of the building. And then in the front of the building, there is a uh service wordmark above the service base, giving sort of directional for anybody coming into the property to understand where they need to pull in.
But if I recall correctly, when you got approval, you didn't ask for the Garaville or the Subaru on the front. You asked for the service on the front.
The get, yeah, correct. We didn't need a variance uh the last time we were before you because both the Garaville and Subaru wordmark were proposed at 24 inches, which were in compliance, which are in compliance with the the zoning rights. So what we're asking.
Star emblem in the middle. How tall is that?
Uh, the height, that again was also approved, the the signs that are on the building currently were all approved as part of the previous sign package. Um, the change is just the Subaru, the what we're asking for is just the Subaru wordmark.
No, I know, but you have a design that you're showing us and I think it's a little wacky. Um, what is the height of the uh star chamber there?
The height, um, well, it's 32 feet here to the top of the building here. So it's just below that.
Yeah, and the sign itself is how tall?
The.
Your sign schedule says 53 inches. Your sign schedule says fifty-three inches. Fifty-three inches is twice the height of something that's twenty-four inches. And, um, certainly much larger than the Subaru sign at thirty-six. So something isn't spatially correct here in this drawing.
So Andy, I'm gonna interrupt, I'm not sure about, uh, you know, comparing the, what he's got on screen versus what we approved for, for the, the current. We, we did issue a side permit for the signs previously granted by variance, just not for the Subaru sign. The star cluster that he refers to, that's not restricted by letter height, because it's not a letter. So we allow it as long as it meets the required, um, location height from distance from grade to the top of that sign. And then, um, uh, maximum sign area allowance. So I think that's why we determined that that was three signs, the Garaville is one, the star cluster is one, Subaru is one. So they got us, uh, in twenty-twenty, a variance to allow three signs.
Not just saying in the drawing, if that's fifty-three inches, it's, uh, two feet taller.
I agree with Andy, the scale is very deceiving. I mean, that's, the, the, the cluster. Shows, I mean. The dimension shown on the drawing is fifty-three inches and it's. Certainly.
Maybe it's just a, a weird effect, but it does look not much larger than the Subaru.
Yeah.
If I, if I recall correctly, and we have, um, I have Scott Corcello here also from Philadelphia Sign, uh, from the sign company. But if I recall correctly, the way it was calculated was from, if you see the red line here. It was the entire sort of space around the sign was included as part of the, um, if, if I'm trying to remember the discussion on the star cluster. But I believe that that, at that time, it was, it, it not just from, it was the, the area around the sign, the star cluster total. If I recall, but if Scott is here, he might be able to offer some insight as to, um, the, the fifty-three inches.
Wait, I want to check the measurements just to make sure they're right. And, uh, as I looked at approving signage, I wanna see the total effect. Um, and so it's pretty important that we understand how far back from the road. Um, the Subaru sign would be. Because then you'd be in, we could say that you're in compliance because you're further away from the road than is required. For a twenty-four inch sign.
So I'll just add, based on the calculations, the, I have a copy of the previous variance. And it says that the Subaru star cluster logo is to be a total of thirty-nine-point-seven-five square feet. And I did nine feet times fifty-three inches, it works out to be thirty-nine-point-seven-five square feet.
Okay. I'm just saying the drawing doesn't look right.
Yeah, it, it does, it does look skewed.
Um, with that aside, if, if we said this was beyond fifty feet from the road, then we could authorize a sign that's larger than twenty-four inches, that is allowable.
I mean, it's certainly, in just visually scaling the setback. I'd say it's well over eighty-five feet.
Yeah, it looks more than fifty feet to me. Assuming the drawing's correct.
I don't have the exact dimension of the, uh, of the setback, I'm looking at the plans as we see here. But i- if I recall from our last discussion, even at the last, uh, it's going back a couple of years now, but I did present in front of you with regards to that. That was one of the reasons you had, um, agreed to, I believe, the, the allowing the three signs total on the front of the building was the, its distance from the road. Um, regarding the Garaville wordmark, Subaru, you know Subaru wordmark in the star cluster, allowing the additional, um, sign was because of the distance from Main Avenue. Um, so, and then. Again, my client had no intention of coming back and asking for an additional variance. Um, we had, the client had fully intended to install twenty-four inch lettering, uh, where Subaru is here. Um, but Subaru Corporate has stated that they will not approve, uh, based on the size and scale of the building. Uh, twenty-four inch lettering for, for Subaru. Um, as proposed, in terms of total square footage of signage, where it, it's based on obviously the, um, we're allowed a total square footage, I believe, of two-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet. And even with the proposed increase to the size of the letters, we're at two-hundred-and-four square feet. So we're below the amount allowed in terms of total signage area, uh, square footage.
Yeah. The, the problem I have with corporate requirements is, I really don't give a damn. Everybody has their own requirements. If I were running a corporation, I would have my requirements, but I also know there's towns in Connecticut that won't even let you put up a sign. So between being that ridiculous and going with something that might be a hundred feet tall, there has to be some reasonableness. So I think our code is actually pretty damn reasonable. And your sign would be allowable, so I'd quit when I was ahead. Um, if it was more than fifty feet from the road, but the, the board in its entirety would have to agree to that. Um, what other sign requests do you have?
It's, that's the only request we're looking for, is to increase the lettering for Subaru from twenty-four inches to thirty-six inches.
I mean, I drove by it today, it's Tom Farkas, I'm sorry, I drove by it today, very, very legible. I was thinking to myself, is this is McDonald's, would McDonald's want a larger sign? Or they just get by having their arches? Now Subaru, that, their little branding is pretty good as well. So you look at it and you say Subaru reads very well, I don't need, not even to go upscale, I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Subaru live in Norwalk. And would go by and say, yeah, that's exactly what we want, I don't know, it seems to be a pretty precious design element for something that is very readable from the road. I mean, in, in documentation and in zoning, you might get that variance. But to me, as a pedestrian, not necessary, as a resident, a little obnoxious.
Yeah, Tom, basically, if it's more than fifty feet from the road, we're talking about somebody driving by in a car being able to read it.
As I was.
Yeah. Um.
I'll, I'll just offer that, um, again, the, the, the building that's being constructed is gonna be New England's largest Subaru dealership. And, uh, basically, um, again, I, I'm not going to argue with you over corporate standards dictating, I understand that. Um, it's putting my client in a difficult position to have to come before you again and ask for a variance to increase the, the letter height to thirty-six inches. Um, the, if, if they're unable to get the thirty-six inch height, um, our understanding is that Subaru, um, the dealership would not be certified, uh, they may not be permitted to put up, um, the signage, so it would, um, ma- make things incredibly difficult for my client. I mean, um, my client Paul Garaville is here, if he wants to offer a few comments, he can. Um, again, we, we did not intend to be here today, but for Subaru Corporate requiring the larger, uh, sign, uh, lettering. If, had we known, it, and it was an oversight by their, uh, by Subaru Corporate when we initially applied. Because they had approved the plan that showed the twenty-four inch lettering. Um, it wasn't until after we were finished and getting ready to, uh, install the signage. That, um, that they raised this issue and said, well, you gotta go back and get larger letters for Subaru. Um, so again, uh, you know, I, I understand your point and I, and I don't necessarily disagree. Um, but it's a.
I understand the difficulty Mr. Garaville faces. Um, I think if you're more than fifty feet away, we could certainly handle a thirty-six inch sign. But the rest of the board has to agree with me, not just me. And the corporation can require whatever the hell they want, including McDonald's. How many McDonald's have you seen that really don't have the arches or they have small signs? I've seen several. You know, if they're on the turnpike, they, they might always stick to their signage requirements. But otherwise, if a community won't allow it, then they'll live with it. I think that's probably true of Subaru. But in the meantime, I don't have a problem with the thirty-six inch lettering. Typically, that's so far from the road.
I really don't have a problem with it. You know, it, 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 it almost becomes a, a background, once you see the building and the star cluster. You know what it is. You know, so, uh.
So if we approve it, I wanna see a new drawing with all the scales checked. And the explaining the fifty-three inch thing, uh, to me. I don't care about the total square feet, I just care about the fifty-three inch. And the way this, it appears in, in the rendering, it looks quite nice, I don't have a problem with it at all. Um, so. However you guys wanna do it, the thirty-six inch thing, it's good with me, um, Danielle, what do you think?
Um, I checked the scales, they, they check out. But I, I don't, you know, I, I think Subaru Corporate should, you know, conform to the local towns. Uh, requirements, the way that we talked about McDonald's doing. Like, I think that, you know, if this is the only solution to satisfy them, that that's pretty rigid.
Well, I will remind the board that it was a year, year and a half ago, that Walmart came before us to add considerably more signage on their building on, uh, Connecticut Avenue. Uh, at the request of corporate. And we turned them down. So, you know, we've, we've butted heads before with large corporations.
Yeah, but in this instance, what we're really talking about is like we did with the, um, Paper House, I can't remember the name of the company precisely, but if you're further from the road and you want people to be able to see your signage. Um, you need larger letters. And the closer the road, for instance, if Subaru had a building, as they do in other places, that is relatively close to the road. And they wanted that larger sign, I just wouldn't approve, uh, make them stick with twenty-four inches.
Well, you know, I, like I said, I don't have a problem, uh, by my visual scaling it by the size of parking spaces. Uh, this building sits, uh, eighty, eighty-five feet from, uh, the road.
Yeah. Marilyn, do you got a problem with the thirty-six inches given?
Oh, and actually, I was just gonna say, I think we're kind of talking, not in a circle, but Mr. Ca- I mean, uh, can't someone just answer if it's like eighty-five feet from the road? In which case, according to you, Andy, this is done, this is, uh, it's, it's allowed, correct?
Well, if we just choose to allow it, yes, we just have that option. We have the option not to allow it, but I think we should allow it.
Okay.
Um, and I'm, it's okay to disagree with Andy.
Oh, no, no, but I'm just saying, but Mr. Costantini, I'm just saying, you know, can't someone just say it is more than fifty feet from the road? I think that would kind of put it to bed in some ways.
I think so.
It's definitely more than fifty feet.
I believe it is more than fifty feet. Um, the plans that were submitted were, uh, the signage plan, so I don't have a survey for the property. But based on, uh, Commissioner Levy's point about the, the, the spaces and whatnot, and I, I believe it is, uh, more than that. And again, if I recall correctly, that was one of the basis for approving the additional signage. Because, um, you, this board treated the Garaville wordmark, Subaru wordmark. Initially, we had wanted the Subaru wordmark and the, um, the cluster, when we came before you. We, the Subaru wordmark and the cluster were treated as one. And you had indicated that, that the board treated those as two separate signs. And part of the rationale for approving the additional sign on the front of the building, both the Garaville wordmark, Subaru wordmark and the star cluster, was it the distance from the road. Um, in that it fit based on the scale and size of the building, uh, and the distance from the road. So, again, I, I, I believe it is more than fifty feet from the road. Um, and I think it fits in line with the size and scale of the building. Um, so we're obviously requesting that, the, the variance be granted.
No, I think we know what your variance request is. And I would put the shovel away and stop digging. Uh, where we're at now is, I think the board, for the majority of the board, seems to be in favor, uh, Tom may not be. Tell me about the thing that's called a pylon. Where does that appear on the site?
N O one.
Um, okay, got it.
Rick, is Scott Corcello a co-presenter, he has his hand up?
Yeah, Scott is our sign, uh, the individual, sign vendor, the individual from the sign vendor, so.
Scott, you have your hand up, you, you could say.
Yes, uh, I was trying to say something earlier about, but you guys were doing good, so I didn't wanna interrupt. You guys, um, all great points everybody's making. I, I was just gonna say the drawing actually is to scale. If you, if you draw a line from the, the top of the logo and the bottom of the logo over the Subaru letters. It, the logo is much larger than the letters, so it is presented properly to scale, that's the one thing. And that, we're past that and, um, clearly the, uh, setback is, there's, it's the gentleman's calculation, it's about eighty-five feet or at least eighty-five feet from the road, absolutely, it's well over the fifty foot. It's almost double. Uh, as far as the building setback, so you guys are all right on track with everything, I just wanna say that. Um, the problem with the, um, one last thing I'll say briefly, the Subaru letters, if they have to go back to two-foot size, they, they will appear quite small on that large-sized building. And, and unfortunately, if they have to go to two-foot Subaru, then the Garaville has, have to go to eighteen-inch by rule. So the Garaville letters will look quite small on that large building and, and not very visible from the road. So, uh, that's just a Subaru rule, that the dealer name has to be slightly smaller than the Subaru letters. So it's kind of a train, chain reaction there, that's all.
Thank you for clarifying that, I was, I was kind of wondering if that was their next, like, solution.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, so given the two sides of the building with signage and given the pylon, uh, which is substantial. Uh, there would seem that there's enough Subaru signage, that people will not mistake it for a pylon. But I think you're all set. If we can get unanimity of the board. Um. I'm all for it, I think several of the others are, but we'll have, just have to see when we go to vote. But in the meantime, I wanna make sure that if the public's out there and anybody else has a comment they wanna make, that they can make it. You have any hands up, uh? I mean, we should go into a point, to a stop at a point where we're, rather than favoring the applicant, we're looking for anybody that is against the application, give them a chance to speak.
I don't see any raised hands, if there's any callers, then again, you have to press star nine to raise your hand. And then, I forgot to say earlier, star six to then unmute yourself.
All right, we always wait a few seconds, give people a chance to react to that. Okay, absent any, um, additional commentary, uh, I don't think we need, um, to further the case on this. I think, uh, we could vote on it when it comes up in, uh, the number of items we're gonna deal with a little later. Uh, I don't have anything further, anybody else?
No, I don't.
Okay, alright, good, we'll move on.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you.
Item E. Chris Graham Perkins.
Okay. The next item is two-two dash one-zero-two-zero-zero-one. Tristram Perkins. Variance of number of stories, two and a half, loud, three and a half, proposed. Height requirement, thirty-one feet maximum to the midpoint, allowed. Thirty-two-point-six-six proposed. Section one-one-eight dash three-four-zero-C. To elevate and reconstruct a single-family residence in a B resident zone. Property located at nineteen South Beach Drive, District Six, Block Thirty-three, Lot Forty-two. Request, the applicant is seeking a variance of section one-one-eight, three-four-zero-C. Which via the schedule. Which via the schedule of residential uses, requires structures in a B-zone, B-residential zone. To be a maximum of two and a half stories and thirty-one feet to the midpoint of the roof. In height from average grade around the structure. This request is being made so that the structure may become compliant with FEMA flood hazard zone regulations. The proposed number of stories is three and a half. One-story variance requested, and the proposed midpoint height is thirty-two point six-six feet. One point six-six feet height variance requested. Background, the structure, a single-family residence was built around nineteen ninety-three. And is currently not compliant with FEMA flood hazard zone regulations. Analysis. This same application was made and variances granted by the board. For a number of stories at midpoint height, November of twenty twenty-one. The board granted the approach to elevate and renovate and the potential building. With the condition that if the building is demolished and rebuilt. It will remain within the same proposed footprint within the building envelope. And be similar to the proposed building plans. However, the certificate of variance was not filed on the Norwalk Land Records. As required within ninety days of the grant, nor were building permits obtained. In the six-month timeframe as required. Mister Chair.
So do we have a someone speaking for the applicant?
Yes, Mister Chairman, Adam Blank, uh, Wopsey Rosen, the parent of Norwalk, I'm the attorney for the applicant. We, as 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 you heard in that introduction from Commissioner Levy, we were in front of you about a year ago, almost to the day. Um, and when obtained the variance for exactly the exact application, nothing's changed. Uh, that's in front of you now is what was in front of you a year ago. Um, a number of months back, the homeowner went to pull building permits. And discovered that there had been an oversight and the the variance was never recorded. Um, which forced a a do-over, um, which is why we're here today. I I I will say, and I will, I won't sort of harp on it, there, there's not much case law. On it, but the the leading sort of treatise in Connecticut on this. Um, says that you essentially, you actually can't put an expiration date on a variance. Um, with the 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 logic is that the purpose of a variance is that you don't comply with the regulation. So if you don't comply and there's a hardship. Then you, if if the regulations change and you now comply, then then you don't need the variance, you're fine. But if the regulations don't comply. You're still out of compliance. There wouldn't be a change that would justify a denial of a variance. And so unlike a special permit or certain other uh, applications that that municipalities cannot impose. Uh, expiration on a variance, we we've, for 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 today, we're we're willing to, which we are, of course, here applying again. Um, and that the Connecticut higher courts haven't decided that issue. Nobody said that you can put a, put an expiration on it. But it's fairly common practice for municipalities to do that. It just hasn't been challenged um, to date. Um, for what we're asking, I know that the part, the, your composition has changed slightly since we were here last. Um, so I will try to give you a a a brief overview of of what what we're asking for, for primarily for their benefit. Um, if I can just share my screen. So the property is nineteen South Beach in in Royton. Um, it's uh. Uh, right here, it's highlighted. Um, the, it's in the B-zone, it's elevation fifteen. It's in the A flood zone, the B resident zone. Uh, the the flood elevation fifteen, it needs, it needs to be raised because it's not currently FEMA compliant. Um, this is the existing house. Uh, this is the existing neighboring house, which I'll talk about in just a a minute. Um, so we we need to be raised to make it FEMA compliant. When we, when we raise the houses, as I think some of you, maybe all of you are aware. Um, that often you essentially end up creating a story below that, what you would, what had been your first floor. Now counts as your second story, and and so for us, we're talking about literally just lifting the house. Um, to get it up, and when it gets lifted, um, what what what's left underneath it counts as a story. Um, so we will be go from two and a half stories to three and a half stories. Um, and the maximum height that you're allowed for your roofline uh, is uh, thirty-nine feet. We're gonna be just under that maximum height, but there's also a midpoint maximum height, which we exceed by just about a foot and a half. Um, the purpose of the the renovation is is predominantly to make the home FEMA compliant. Um, the. Um, you've, there's quite a bit of case law, and your your past practice has been um, raising a house to make it, when you make it FEMA compliant. Um, that if you need to exceed the story requirement or the height requirement. That that is considered a hardship and a basis for you granting of a variance. Um, it, in our case, this this won't interfere with the comprehensive plan of zoning. The neighboring house, which is next to us, got got a. Uh, was, at the time that we initially came in front of you, had just also gone through the zoning process uh, and been constructed. And you'll see, if I scroll down to the, of our last slides here, slide here. This is our neighbor's house, and this is the house that we're proposing. You'll see that they're, they're just about identical in terms of height, whatever way you want to look at height. Um, so it's not, it's gonna be. Very compatible with what what the existing uh, neighborhood is like. Um, the. And then, and that's, I mean, that's really the the gist of it. I can, I can scroll through the. The reconstruction of the house when it gets, it gets elevated. Um, this is sort of the final form of what the architect. Um, uh, Krista Dodaro, who's who's on the call or the Zoom as well, and if you have questions for him, he can answer, but. Um, but this is what's sort of proposed. Um, and the only, again, the only variances we're seeking are for the. Height and story, which were the variances that were previously granted. I mean, I'm happy to answer questions. I could give you more, but I I don't want to, I I don't want to talk unnecessarily.
I'm good. Lee, you good?
Lee, uh, yeah, Lee's good with this.
Yeah, uh, I don't remember who else was on the board at that time. I don't believe Danielle was. I don't think Tom was. Marilyn, were you on the board then? For this property being raised. You're muted, you're gonna unmute yourself. Your little mute thing, gotta fix that. There you go.
Uh, interestingly enough, I I know the property and I don't remember voting on this, so.
Yeah, I remember it quite well. We would grant extensions if we were allowed to, in this particular case, the way the ordinance was written, were prohibited. Um, so there's not in the discretion of the board to have done that. So that's why you're here. And we gotta go through it again.
I have asked your staff if if they'll uh, in the zoning rewrite, if they would consider. For for your benefit, probably more than ours, to 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 make it like at least a year on the, on the.
Yeah.
The variance.
Be better that we had the discretion, at least up to a point. Um, if something were to lapse for a couple of years, maybe you do not allow it after that point. The. Intention of the board has been all along, from the time that the large storms hit and FEMA regulations changed. Um, to allow the raising of uh, properties to comply with FEMA. That's our objective. Um, we're not interested in the houses becoming more expansive. So we require that it remains in the footprint, and my recollection is that the way we granted it last time and what you're asking for this time. Is that the house will remain within the footprint that exists. And so that pretty much meets my requirements. Uh, I don't think there's anything outlandish here. And the the house does become big, but you're not asking to expand it. So that's, that's a good thing. Anybody else?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. I actually, I think I do remember this, but anyway.
Okay.
Nothing.
So Danielle, do you have a fresh look at this? You all set?
Yep, yeah. I was just wondering if there were minutes from like the year ago, because I was like, oh.
Um, I don't quite know why they were delayed, and it doesn't, doesn't matter much to me because they're not that delayed. Uh, they're just slightly outside the envelope. Tom, you got any point the, do you want to make?
No, no, see a lot of this, right? So um, it looks pretty, pretty typical sadly.
Well, we do meet head-on with folks that want to make the house much larger as well as raise it, and I I just, I will never go along with that.
No, no, it doesn't seem gargantuan.
Yeah, this one's fine. All right, so with that in mind, maybe we should move on. Um, unless we've got somebody raising their hand that wants to join in that either for or against this project.
So we have no raised hands for panelists, for, we have one attendee, they may just be checking things out. Um, but if they are call-ins, they need to press star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute.
Okay, we'll give it a few seconds, and then if we move on. Uh, we're about ready to go through approval process. Deal with each one, and I'm pretty sure you're familiar with that. Oh, joke. Um, with that in mind, uh, I don't think that you need a rebuttal, so was no need for that. Let's just move along and get the rest of the business taken care of. Thanks, Ed. So let's see what else we got, that we have to not skip over. Let's just go ahead and deal with uh, B through A withdrew, as you recall. Let's deal with the last one first. Um, nineteen South Beach, which we just listened to. Um, is there a motion?
We will make a motion that we approve this item. And my only comment would be your stipulation is that the applicant makes a determined effort. To file uh, for his ZBA approval. And for his building permit in a timely manner, so we don't see him again.
That would be just Tim Dandy. Uh, I'll second. So all in favors, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, you'll have to tell us.
Yeah, well, Phil, Phil Noir, it it's a raised hand.
So five, zero, zero, we're good. Next item. We'll move to item D Zion Properties, which is the uh, the Subaru Subaru request. Um, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the sign with thirty-six inch letters. I, in in scaling it out. The front of the building is at least eighty to eighty-five feet from the road. So I feel fairly confident that we can live with it.
Yeah, I think the larger lettering makes sense when it's that far away.
Yes.
Um, any other discussion? Anybody second? Da 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 da, boom, boom, Andy will second. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, Tom, are you in favor or not?
I'll dissent. My jur- Jurassic Park defense, just you can, doesn't mean you should.
I just gotta make sure I understand what you just told me.
I I am against it. I am against, I'm dissenting.
Four. One and zero.
Right.
So the item passes. They need at least four. Then the next item we're dealing with is uh, the Stewarts. At fifteen Skytop. And we were going to hold them over, and they agreed to it, and do we agree to it?
I agree to it.
Right, I agree.
All right, so assuming that we've got everybody on board that's fifteen zero zero. Or five, rather, zero, zero, and. Hold over. That is not going to be closed out tonight. All right, what else do we have to take care of? We got B, but we took care of that, right?
No.
We discussed it, we haven't voted.
Must have put a note down. Yeah.
One moment.
Well, this is the parking, this is, this is the one that came.
Yes.
Look for a raise, and we didn't, didn't go along with the raise, and we asked, they asked, could they keep the parking that they already had there? Um, there, and then we said, we probably would, and so let's just vote on it to make it official.
So that's seventeen speech.
Anybody have any figure comment before I rush us on?
I'm sorry, Marilyn, what did you say?
No, this is about seventeen speech, isn't it?
Yeah.
This is seventeen.
Seventeen each speech.
Yeah. You know, it's kind of tucked down at the end of that street, so it is a a really congested little section.
Yeah, I agree.
Got a lot of street furniture.
Yeah, so let's, let's vote. Uh, I'll move it. Andy will move it. We need a second.
I'll second.
Or I'll second.
I'll take Marilyn.
Please do.
Thank you.
Um, so with that, we have a first and a second. Let's all vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Tom, I'm, Tom, I'm aye.
So that's five, zero, zero, and. With the board actions, and we have some administrative stuff to go through real quick. By the way. The folks that might still be listening in, if you didn't follow what we were doing, you can check with zoning tomorrow. Um, and then there's a requirement that it be posted, that what, seven days? Is that right?
Correct, it will run uh, next Friday in the paper, but I send certified mail um, decision letters.
All right, that's terrific. Thank you, by the way, for all the work you do do. So administrative action, the minutes from the last go-round, which was not last month, but the month prior. Anybody have any objections to the minutes? I move the minutes.
Second.
You both second?
Yep.
Same.
Okay. And all.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that. I missed the vote, so.
We haven't voted yet. We're just doing it now.
Oh.
In favor.
All right, and Lee, were you not there? You were not.
I was not there.
Oh, all right.
I missed a couple of minutes.
It was Tom.
I was there, I was there.
All right, and you're in favor or no?
I'm in favor, yeah.
Four. Zero, one. You wonder what all that means. It means those are, those against and those abstaining. With that done, status of training, board members serving as January one, two thousand twenty-three, which is right around the corner. Must complete initial land use training by Jan one, two thousand four, so we gotta. Hit the gas a little bit, make sure that we've got people getting lined up for training before the whole world decides they're going to get trained.
So that's. Remember it's available.
That's Lee, Lee and Tammy, you're gonna handle that, yes?
Yes.
I'll work with Tammy.
All right, good. So with that in mind, um, if anybody has anything else, bring it up now, and otherwise we'll move to a German.
I move with you, Jim.
Ah, I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Good to see everybody.
Okay.
All right, have a nice evening. What's left?
Good, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Bye bye, thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Okay.